Harvey didn't make a quorum, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Uh, we should be good. Um, I'm here. I think we got Deja, Sonya and me. So we have four. I'm messaging Harvey now.
I'm not sure who Kimberly is. Do we know? Are we waiting for somebody else? Is she part of the Quincy team?
Yes. She's with the Urban League. The other, there may be one other individual, Yasmin Smith, who's our Director of Development. She'll come in later.
Okay.
All right. We ready to start?
I think so. Paige just, um, she should be jumping on here.
Okay.
You can start unless you want to wait.
Now you let me know when we're good to go.
Mayor, we can go ahead and start if you'd like to start the meeting and then I'm sure she'll jump in.
All right. Sounds good. All right. I call this me in order at twelve thirty-three P M. And uh,
Sorry, I just need to confirm what he did. We're live.
Okay. Yeah, we're, we're live. I saw it on Facebook. Go ahead.
Okay. Oh, there she is.
All right. So I called me in order at twelve thirty-three P M. And roll call, please, for quorum.
Mayor Wallace.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Emily Hill. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Wallace.
Here.
Councilmember Deja Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Krupa. Okay, thank you.
All right. We have a quorum. Moving on to Pledge of Allegiance. And I will ask our Mayor Pro Tim to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I appreciate it, sir. Uh, now moving on to, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Alrighty. Moving on to the regular agenda item. We have two agenda items today, uh, which is the reason for the special meeting. And, uh, the first one is consideration, discussion, and possible action on applying for the health literacy grant in authorizing, uh, myself to sign a resolution evidencing such authorization. And agenda number two is consideration, discussion, and possible action on partnering with the Austin Area Urban League for a health literacy grant. Uh, these two kind of go, uh, hand in hand. So, uh, I want to, uh, hand the mic over. Well, Tom, is there anything you wanna, you wanna say first before I hand the mic over to our, uh, Urban League, um, representatives regarding this?
Um, probably number two will need to be postponed because until we are, uh, affirmed of getting the grant and then we would need to, uh, go to bid. We understand that his organization is probably the only one that does the work, but it still requires the bidding. So number one is fine to take action on today, but number two, I think needs to wait.
All right. Okay. Uh, with that being said, I give the, uh, you the floor over to the Urban League. Uh, Quincy is the CEO and President for the Austin Area Urban League. Uh, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the nature of the potential opportunity. It does not require a health institution or a health agency. It requires a municipality. And the thinking or approach that we wanted to take is that the city would not have to, um, put any human capital into it. Um, the Urban League and the, um, and our partner Plumage and Cape is prepared to do all of the administrative work, um, as a pass through for the city. Uh, and I do believe there are instances where these types of things can be no bid, um, unless that process doesn't exist in the city of Manor. It's standard practice in municipalities across the country for certain instances for there to be no bid processes. Um, so I, I just wanted to open the floor to have some conversation about, um, or have a Q and A about, uh, what exists because there's an opportunity to set up health literacy to impact the residents of the city of Manor. Um, one to receive, uh, information around what health information, uh, and resources may be available to them for free so that they have equitable access to, um, quality of life and other, uh, health assets and resources. But I also wanted to open the floor because just to have a quick conversation about, uh, any of the questions that the City Council may have about why we would undertake this opportunity in Manor. Absent a, a health institution or a health, um, a, 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 a health entity.
So, Mr. Quincy, this is, uh, Councilwoman Anne Weir. So am I understanding that this would,
Can I take him?
For educational initiatives and programs designed to increase awareness or improve, uh, diagnosis, prevention, treatment, or management?
Kim, I'll let you weigh in. I'll let my partner from Plumage and Cape weigh in on that question.
I apologize. I couldn't hear the question. Hi, hello, everyone. My name is Kimberly Bunting. I'm, uh, the President of Plumage and Cape, and we're looking to partner with the Austin Area Urban League. Um, I'm sorry, um, can you repeat the question?
Sure. I was just trying to understand, um, a little bit more about the grant. So, um, I was wondering, is this funding that's going to be for, uh, an educational, educational initiative? That would be like programs, uh, designed to help increase awareness, um, prevention, treatment, management, improve diagnosis, that kind of thing?
Yes. So the extent of the grant, um, does include the program design, but it also includes the implementation. So the Office of Minority Health, um, with the federal government is just looking at cities and municipalities who could build out this program. And what we're really looking to do is build out the program, uh, in partnership with the Austin Area Urban League for the, uh, city of Manor. So it, it's my understanding the city of Manor is something like sixteen point nine four percent African American and, uh, two point two four percent, um, Hispanic Americans. And this grant would specifically impact them, um, in four ways. Um, one, it would give specialized support about COVID nineteen, about the misinformation that's happening, um, whether it's Pfizer, Moderna, Johnson and Johnson, whatever that may have you. Um, they're able to, um, speak with them on a one-on-one basis. And, um, really look at the panel of people that the Austin Area Urban League and Plumage and Cape has put together, um, and really attend these in their own neighborhood. So they're able to get that information in terms of health education. One. Two, there's an app that's included in the program design. And once again, this is all, this infrastructure is already built out between the Austin Area Urban League and Plumage and Cape. So there's nothing that the city would have to do additionally, but, um, the citizens could access, um, specific information for this on their app. Um, any kind of questions that they have. And three, their specialized support on a one-on-one basis where they're able to contact actual, um, health advocates that are certified who are community health workers who are able to answer their questions. And then the fourth part of that, um, is they're able to find where their vaccines are that are located, uh, close to them if they so choose to take that route. So it is, uh, to answer your question, it is health education, but it's also implementation and the infrastructure is kind of already built out there. Um, and it would just be, um, really passing it through the city of Manor and having the city of Manor citizens, uh, benefit from it.
And the ultimate goal is to, uh, prob- to reduce and ultimately eliminate health disparities? Is that what we're trying to do?
Yes, correct, correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that I understood. I just wanted to make sure I understood where we were on this, all of this. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's all my questions. I'll let you guys continue. That's, that's all my questions. I'm sorry.
There are residual supports built into it that come with the partnership with the Austin Area Urban League. We, we, between our, our partnership with Plumage and Cape and the relationship with the city of Manor. We will be able to stand up, uh, vaccination sites, um, as a part of the education and literacy side of it. Uh, we have a health and wellness partner, uh, who we have a relationship with already that is prepared that when successful in this endeavor, we can stand up, uh, multiple mobile, um, or multiple stagnant test, uh, vaccination sites to start, uh, getting, um, the residents of Manor vaccinated at a higher rate. I understand that there are some things going on now. But my opinion is those aren't as consistent as they should be. And, um, in this relationship with the Urban League, we can, uh, increase the vaccination rates via education outreach and community engagement and setting up either mobile or stagnant sites, uh, in the city of Maine.
Understood. Okay. Thank you so much.
O- only, only one clarification point for me on data, uh, before asking any other council members. So our demographic population right now is fifty-six percent Hispanic, twenty-five percent African American. Uh, any other questions from council? Um, I guess, uh, some thoughts or, or questions. Um, one, um, let's see. Who's, um, are we going to select a, uh, college partner?
A, a higher ed partner is not necessarily needed with the, with, with Plumage and Cape and, um, Austin Area Urban League. But we do have relationships with Houston Tillison University because they are, are one of, I think it's two minority serving institutions and designated minority HBCU institutions in the region, the other being Concordia College, which we also have an informal relationship with that's being formalized.
Yeah, that was my question because I know that Houston Tillison has some, uh, work they've been working in and, and dinner with health and the same sort of mission pieces. And so that was my, uh, question in that area as well as, um, uh, I think, and yeah, you said, mentioned, uh, Concordia as well. So, yeah.
I would throw ACC in there as well. We do have, uh, we have a, we have a formalized relationship with ACC as well.
Yeah, that was, that was going to be the third one I listed because there, there are, there nursing programs. So, uh, so good. See, I was just, that was one of my questions. Other question, um, was, or a thought was, I had a, a morning call with, um, and I'm blanking on a name. Uh, Roscoe. Uh, I'm sorry. I can't think of his last name.
Bonson. Bonson.
Yeah, I had a morning call with him this morning about the grant and, um, uh, and, and, you know, some purpose intent, the partnership pieces and those kinds of things. And, uh, we talked about the, um, procurement pieces as well. And, um, he said, he mentioned that several of the entities, uh, cities had called his office in regards to some clarification regarding that section. And, um, he said, uh, uh, and, and if anyone wants to verify, you're more than welcome to call them and verify on that. But he said that, uh, from his perspective, the procurement process due to the late time, the short turnaround and note of the, the, the reduced scheduling, uh, process of this grant and a short turnaround on due date that if you were unable to do a procurement prior to the grant, then in your grant application, you can kind of explain how you would go through the procurement process, uh, should you award it. And then afterward, after the award, you can move forward with any, with those procedures and steps and providing clarification on ongoing process, um, with, uh, the grant management, uh, entity for this, uh, for this grant. So, um, I did want to make sure that that information was communicated, that, um, the procurement process does not have to be done before the grant is submitted. And, um, he will verify that for anyone if you would like to call or shoot them an email.
I, I, I'm glad you, I'm glad you touched on that point. I'm, and I'm glad you said it because that, that means that that's no longer a barrier.
Um, it's, it's still part of our city policy.
Understood, understood. But it's, I mean, understanding that, um, it's probably also a part of the city process too that there, and I, I may be making the wrong assumption that there, there is a no bid process when there are instances where, um, the proposed vendor has a specialized skill set. Um, if that is not a part of the city of Manor's process, then I stand corrected. But I, I know we have went through this process with other, uh, municipalities from a national perspective a- across, um, ninety, uh, different cities, across thirty-six states, uh, of which Houston is one of those who has been a beneficiary of, um, uh, um, uh, no or a non-compete bid process. Um, we can help to put that language into it if it is the desire to move this forward uh, because of the relationship between the Austin Area Urban League and Plumage and Cape. So it's, it's, it's just what's the temperature or, or the appetite for bringing this type of service to the city, to the people of the city of Maine.
And, and Quincy, the stumble city manager, um, we've had some back and forth with, uh, the gentleman that, uh, Mayor Pro Tim mentioned and his responses to us, and I think council may have gotten copies of those, was that number one, i- this is not a pass through. It's the city's responsibility to administer this. We may contract with someone to do that for us, which would be the procurement process. Number one, and number two, um, we're responsible for the application and a plan, uh, that needs to go forward. The temperature is we, we think this would be great, but there are steps following moving forward and we're concerned about the timing on that. Um, it was also mentioned in his response that this does need to go to bid. And it may be that you're the only company that bids on it, but it was still a requirement that it, uh, meets state, uh, laws with regard to procurement or bidding processes. Uh, Paige, I don't know if you want to follow up or if I've misstated anything.
Uh, this is Paige Sines, City Attorney. Uh, just to, that, that is, we, we have the conversations with the coordinator for, with the, the grants that's, that's being proposed here. And, um, you know, obviously the, i- if the city's going to apply, they, and choose to apply, we, you want this to be successful and to follow all the grant requirements because those can be pretty technical. And so if, you know, if there is, if this is a sole source type of an entity, that, that has to be established one way or, or another. Um, but the grant requirements, uh, both in the federal law and in the city's policy and state law do require a process to, for a procurement process to be followed. And so we've confirmed that with the grant coordinator, but we've also suggested some, some ways to also make the application and to point out the process that will be followed to engage your, um, subcontractor or sub-recipient so that the, that the application is a, is a best foot forward and shows how you're going to partner with somebody to achieve the grant. Um, they, they did also say it's not a, it's not a pass through. So what that, what that means to the grant coordinator and for the city is, as Tom and Lydia have said, which is, um, the city is, is going to be the entity that's responsible for compliance with all the grant requirements. And, and so if you're going to engage somebody to fulfill those for you, you go through that process and then they, they enter into a contract with you that makes them subject to all the requirements of the grants. You've got compliance all the way through, through the, through the process. And I can answer any questions if anybody has any.
So, I have a question. Um, so when I talked to Roscoe, we went to page thirty, uh, uh, twenty of the grant. Uh, and, uh, section, what is that? Uh, L, okay, L contractual justification. And that's where he said that, again, because of the timeline, that, uh, the procurement procedures, uh, don't have to be done prior to, uh, the application being submitted. And so I think that's the intention. I know I, I did see the questions and answers that were sent, um, but I asked a more specific question about did procurement need to take place prior to the grant application submission? And he said, because it, uh, because of timeline, what we're going to do, um, can be submitted. And then after the post award, if you look in that section, then you're going to have to provide, you know, more details of that after post award about what you're doing and make sure you follow what you say you're going to do. So I just wanted to make sure that, that's as there is. We don't have to do the stuff prior to submission of the application. Um, and, you know, if there's still uncertainty in that, then I would recommend, um, having a call with, uh, with, uh, with Roscoe again to clarify that specific question. Uh, concerning questions, the thing with, the thing with federal agencies, when you're doing grants, is they're not, they're never going to give you, uh, they're going to answer your specific question that you asked because they have to be careful not to answer in certain way to release new information regarding the grant that hasn't already been, that doesn't go to all grantee applications. So they can only answer specific to certain, um, questions. And that question has to be in information that, that's already shared to the greater community. And so when you ask a specific question in regards to this section, uh, uh, letter L, it says that you can still submit the application. Um, and then, and how are you going to go about your procurement process? And then after a war, you can determine your, uh, you can go through those pieces. I just want to.
And, and Mayor Pro Tim, that we, we agree with that. That's, uh, the same information we got from the, from the same gentleman. Um, but what it does is breaks this down into a couple of steps as opposed to one step. We do need a, a plan to accompany the application. And from what we've, uh, determined, the application, although the deadline is the twentieth, is requested to be in place on the eighteenth. So if there is a plan that describes what it is we're, we're trying to do here and we can get the application completed, reviewed and signed, we're, we're good to go with regard to making application for the grant and then handling the other two pieces, uh, upon an award if we get it.
So, just so that I'm clear, and this is from the Urban League's perspective, the city is saying that they can develop an application, attach a procurement process and submit, or are we saying the Urban League can go ahead and write the grant on behalf of the city, submit it, have a review, submit it to the city, have it, have the city submit it and then, uh, attach the procurement process to that and then move forward, uh, pending approval or not of our application.
I, 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 I think I agree. I've, I've got traffic noise. Um, I don't know, Paige, uh, was there anything there that didn't sound right?
Tom, I think he's asking one or the other if it, the, the city, uh, uh, doing the application and submitting it or the Urban League coming up with the proposal and plan, sending it to city for a review and approval and then the city sending it up.
I think because we don't have any knowledge, the latter would be preferred. That they go through the process, fill out the paperwork, we review it rather than us starting all over and, and not sharing, not sure that we're capturing everything that needs to be provided. It's just there's, there's a crunch time on, on how that has to happen.
Are there any, with, if they decided to, to, to do this, then are there any contention points or, or things, uh, that would be alarming or concerning, um, that would potentially, uh, result in a kickback, uh, that could potentially make us miss the deadline?
Um, I, well, you know, again, we're, if we, if we try to formulate this application and complete it with no knowledge about what is healthcare and, and the, the things that they're trying to accomplish here, it's going to take longer. If we can get Quincy's organization to fill out the application, uh, attached to that a plan, which is what's asked for, we will review it and I think we can turn that around in a much faster pace than, than trying to have us do that. We don't have a plan. Um, we, again, don't have all of the information that might be necessary for a, a complete application.
Quincy, your thoughts?
We're ready to go. All the city got to do is tell us yes, and we'll start on that application today or tomorrow. And pretty much with, um, with the team that we have in place with Plumage and Cape and the Urban League's Development Department, giving it back to y'all before the, a couple of days before we actually have to submit so that we need, if we need to talk again about if it is an electronic portal that we submitting or if it is hard copies that we submitting, and Kim already understands that process. So does the AAU development team. Whatever those steps are, uh, we're prepared to undertake those now.
Yeah, my understand, my understanding was that it was all going to have to be electronic forms.
Right. And we're prepared to, to, with the city's authorization, or we prepare it, hand it over. Um, because that may be where some of the, um, human capital side of it comes in. Um, is the city prepared to take what we do and then submit it? Or would they count on us to submit it on behalf of the city? I mean, I think, I, that's if we get the yes, that, that we want to move forward. We then have to talk about, all right, well, who's going to actually do the submitting? Because we're prepared to submit it as well, if given that, uh, approval to do so.
We, we don't have a contract with you to do any of the work here at this point. And so we're required as the city to make the application. It would be helpful for your organization who knows all about the program to fill out in the application and get it to us a couple of days before the eighteenth, so we have a chance to look at it and make sure that it's something we can sign.
So Kim, I, I'm, I'll translate that. Do we have a way to download the app from the system? We do on our end. We have a way of setting up the application so that when we send it back, you're, you, the city and then whoever it designates to enter the data that, or the proposal that we develop along the different sections of the grant, it can enter those into the system and we can be there to support this happening, uh, live, even without a contract. We, we, we'll volunteer or we'll do this service for the city pro bono.
Yes, I'm understanding that as well. Yes, it's grants.gov. Um, so it's going to be electronic submission. Yes, I'm understanding that as well. Yes, it's grants.gov. So it's going to be electronic submission, but. I understand what you're saying, Quincy. I agree. And then I think that capability would work as well for the city if so, if they so choose.
Our desire is to move forward with the application process. We just want to make sure that. Eyes are dotted, t's are crossed and that we're not lacking anything. And. Again, if you're asking us to fill out an application for things that we're unfamiliar with, there could be mistakes.
Quincy and, and, and Kimberly, are y'all able to just real quick? Kind of speak about the, the amount of the grant you're seeking for, the, the administrative aspect of it. In some of the different ways that the city would be able to help. Manage or oversee this, this grant, especially since we don't have a health entity. We don't have, you know, a grant writer in, in, and so forth.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that, Mayor Wallace. One of the things we consider. Was, yes, the city would be. The grantee and I, I believe that the city can charge up in ten, up to a ten percent administrative fee. On the totality of the grant, that's two hundred grand a year over two years for a total of four hundred K. And I believe inside of those resources, the city can, and this is also something we could help with is to. Develop a position description for a grants administrator to oversee the work of Austin Urban League and Plumage and Kate. As the sole source providers of this service for the city of Mainor. To make sure that when the reporting and things happen. That that individual that the city may have for the two-year life of this grant. And, and we have resources, always solicit other resources to put in place to make it go longer than that. This is just one funding source. So we're looking at a five to a ten-year relationship with this being the first two years of funding. We're looking at, how can those resources be utilized to put the individual in place? To represent the city's interest and make sure the reporting happens. Receiving the data and the completed reporting submissions from the Austin Urban League and Plumage and Kate. So, and, and then there's also, I mean, with, 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 with. An additional two hundred K in administrative resources a year over the next year. We could also secure a space for us to have a, a brick and mortar in Mainor. If there is a space for lease or if the city has another space. That space can be put on these resources for us to operate. A brick and mortar health equity and health education center. Out of Mainor as a program of the Austin Urban League's Health and Wellness Division. So that there, there will be some financial resources so that this does not. We don't have to, the city would not have to go back to the people and raise taxes. There's a, there's an administrative percentage here that comes out of the grant over the next two years that. I think will be more than appropriate for the city to. To do what they please with, including bring on staff to oversee our work if, if, if we are selected.
Any other questions from council?
Okay, just to have clarity, the Austin Urban League and the other company would be willing to do the paperwork without being granted. The bid for the process, right?
Yes. And, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll absorb those administrative costs. I'm, the Urban League and Plumage and Kate is prepared to do that.
And, and if I, if I can. Step in here, I think that information will be very helpful for us to write up the bid proposals. So it, it. It would be valuable for us to have that information. So that anyone responding to a bid application. Clearly understands what it is we're looking for. And, and as I've mentioned, I think you may be the only organization that, that offers this type of comprehensive. Plan and therefore be the successful recipient.
Okay, should we? Tell me how you would like that because that's something we can get back to you by Monday.
Yeah, I think the application completed. And a copy of the plan that I think you have ready to go so that we can utilize that for creating the bid.
Okay. I don't want to make any assumptions now. So are we, is the city of Mainor saying they would like us to proceed with the application?
We have to file the application. We would like your help in doing. I think that's probably the best way to phrase it.
Yeah, understood, understood, understood.
We'll, we'll get to a vote on that and, and after everybody gets done asking their questions and. So Quincy, right now, and it's going out, out of a traditional. Robert's Rules of Order and this opening this to the floor for discussion before we go into, is there a motion to, for, for, for. For council to want to go forward with this grant? So a- any additional questions from council?
I have a question. It may be too far in the weeds of it, but. Within the scope of how the grant application would go. Is it assumed that there are any positions that in order to? Have it all up and running? Is any of that city? Responsibility or city employees or something like that? Like how it has the personnel table of the position and things like that? Is that going to be already required?
That, that would be. AAUL and plumage and Kate staff, no city personnel would be included. On the actual grant operation and implementation side, on the service side. With the exception of that individual, if the city decides to use that administrative portion of the grant. To hire somebody to oversee our work as a grant administrator. So let's, let's say we, we get a notification that we got the award. Then AAUL and plumage and Kate is successful in the sole source. Bid process. And we then understand in our plan that a portion of that two hundred K. Each year over the next two years, the city would. Hire a grant administrator to oversee the AAUL's work and. Partner with the AAUL and plumage and Kate to support the reporting aspect. Which is essentially us writing and doing the reporting and turning it over and walking the grant administrator through the reporting process. For the different data and, and other things that we will have to report on in, in the reporting cycle. That's, that's all a part of what the Austin Urban League and Plumage and Kate would do. In support of the city of Mainor and this. Team member that the city may decide to hire. So, so on the grant operation side of it, no city staff required. On the grant. Administration side of it, that's at the city's discretion if they would choose to put. A grant administrator in place with the resources that will come from the grant. For administrative purposes.
Any additional questions from, from council? Any, any additional questions or remarks, Tom, Lydia?
A little more clarity or not. I guess the first thing would be to get the grant and then from there. Do what we need to do to effectively.
Got it. All right, last call for remarks. There being none, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that the city council, is it for the first one? Possible action to apply for the health literacy grant. And authorization for the mayor to sign a resolution evidencing such authorization.
It's been so motioned. Do I have a second? And probably second, but Mayor Potem got there right before you again, Sonja. You got, you got to hit that button a whole lot quicker. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ware?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. And so you're saying, Tom, for the second one. The, the partnering aspect, the, the official partnering needs to be tabled. Or can we do that on, on contingency of, we need to put a, I guess the piece here is. Well, number two have to come back to council. And we have, and we have the twentieth, which is the deadline. So instead of having the issue of another special meeting, is there a way to do this as a contingency? A, a, a preapproval based on contingencies are met?
We, we. Would need to, would need to happen again. But.
Tommy, you're breaking up.
Yeah, in order for us to apply for the grant, we can't, we don't need necessarily have to have the partnership already. Assigned or awarded to anybody as long as we go ahead and include what our procurement process is going to be. So that would not, that will not. Prevent us from actually applying for the grant. So this will have to come back to council.
Once we actually hear back that we actually got, get awarded and then going through the whole procurement process, I got it.
Yeah, well, and we'll probably do that before we even find out. Of, of the grant, just so that it's already set in place. If there happens to be another opportunity for us to apply for a grant, then we already have that partnership set in place. For it. Does that make sense? Am I incorrect, Paige?
That's correct.
Do we also have to add the other entity on there as well, instead of it just being the Austin, the, the Urban League?
I would say no on that one because plumage and Kate will be a subcontractor to Urban League. Just to make it cleaner and less headache for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Get out of this town or go over to the rest of them.
Somebody's unmuted.
I want to go to Green.
Okay, so do I have a motion to, are we going to want to disable this then? Would that be the motion, disable it or are we doing a full phone?
You don't, just don't, don't take any action on it.
Okay, all right. So no action on number two. And with that being said, I call this meeting adjourned.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Bye bye. Thank you.